Ledge.
Ledge my allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you are asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so you are easily identified. I've got a few notes tonight. The Winona Human Rights Commission has named the winners of their annual essay contest for area students in grades five through twelve. The essay topic was what does human rights mean to me? And what role does it play in my life? The winners are first place, Alicia Velasquez Niti. She's a junior at Cotter High School. Second place went to Stephanie Cardenas, the junior at Cotter High School. And third place went to Kate Casey, ninth grade, Winona Senior High School. The essay contest winners will be awarded a Visa gift card and a certificate. I read all three of these and they were excellent, so I just want to congratulate all three of you on them. On behalf of the city of Winona, in honor of Preservation Month, we wish to commend Walnut Corner LLC for saving and rehabilitating one hundred and fifty-one East Third Street, a contributing property to the Winona Commercial Historic District, presented with appreciation and gratitude in recognition of dedicated stewardship of our community's historic resources. And we'll be presenting this to Walnut Corner LLC. This past week, we received word that Engage Winona's founding executive director, Brian Verding, will be taking on a new role with a nonprofit in Little Falls, Minnesota. Utilizing Engage Winona's platform, Brian has set a new standard for community engagement. His work has touched much of Winona in one way or another. Including but not limited to some of his work and Engage Winona's work was community outreach, messaging and social media response and communication during the pandemic. Basically, any response from the city during the pandemic was Brian, and he did a phenomenal job with that. He also worked as staff leadership and innovation work. He is, he was and will be contracted, I'm sorry, Engage Winona will be contracted by the city to work on the current arts program and also the sustainability plan. Engage Winona was the facilitator for the Alternative Response Team Steering Committee, community conversations, specifically on the east end or east side of the city. He also worked on the building reuse of Madison and Central Schools and the transportation focus groups. Also worked on complete census committee for Winona County. I would personally like to thank Brian and wish him well in his future endeavors. I'm looking forward to Engage Winona's next steps in hiring a new executive director and supporting community engagement for years to come. Brian will be a large loss to our community, so again, I do want to say thank you to him personally. Lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that it's going to be really hot this week. Heat-related deaths outnumber all other weather-related deaths in the U.S. each year. Couple of key things to keep in mind, stay out of the sun, hydrate and eat small amounts frequently. Cool your skin with wet cloth or waters or water and moving air like fans or the breeze outside. Take frequent breaks if working outdoors and avoid large amounts of sugar and/or alcohol, as those can dehydrate you faster than you might expect. Above all else, please check in on your neighbors, your friends and your family as necessary during our first heat wave of the summer. That's all I have today. City manager Steve Sarvey.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to join in and thank Brian Verdig for his tireless efforts in response, community response and community outreach. Again, he's really set a high bar for us to try to follow. And we look forward to continuing to work with Engage Winona as they hire someone to try to fill his shoes. I also want to thank the Community Response Team. This was the City COVID Response Group that met to try to help us to navigate through the various changes and laws and to try to read between the lines of what was happening during the pandemic. Members included John Howard, Marcia Ratliff, Jay Rasmussen, thank you, Jay, Hallie Meyer, Nick Larson, Luke Sims, Paul Douglas, Joe Corcoran and Laura Holberg. We also had Brian Verdig, again, Christie Ransom and Silas Bergen, who sat in on several of those meetings as well. So we thank you so much for your efforts and we know you're going to continue to meet. We might look at some innovation projects for them to keep an eye on and to advise staff and department heads, but also to try to keep looking over the horizon in case there's any other pandemics that start brewing up again. We want to see those as far in advance as we can, just like we did this time. Further out, of course, would be even better. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Steve. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of city council who are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Muller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Pinsky.
Here.
For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation and then I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the city council. Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council and I have given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
Under required public hearings, item two point one is to propose twenty twenty-one sidewalk replacement project preliminary assessment role.
We will now open the public hearings. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay, we do have a short presentation. By Chad Minor, our city engineer.
Yes, this is just our yearly sidewalk replacement project. This year, we're between Lafayette and Franklin Streets as well as a handful of other complaints. City portion of that is replacing pad ramps that are not meeting ADA requirements, as well as a handful of curb and gutter complaints. The city portion of that is roughly seventy-three thousand dollars. And then we also have the assessable portion of the project, which again is just looking for sidewalk that's not ADA compliant and replacing that.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, now we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Again, anybody from the public wish to speak? Again, does anybody from the public wish to speak?
Hi, this is Fernando Creo. Did you say we needed to have a permission beforehand to speak?
You can go ahead and speak now. We will need your name, full name and address, please.
It's Fernando Creo, last name is C A R I L L O. It's a one oh five East Sarnia Street.
Go ahead, Fernando.
They have outlined or to, they sent me a mail that they were going to remove two sections of my sidewalk. And I tried to get a contractor last year, but that was pretty tough. Anyway, so I ended up grinding the cement down and then I had called to see if they would check to see if it was okay, if it would meet compliance, and they never responded. So how do I get that inspected to see if it is in compliance or if it does need to be removed?
I believe we do not accept grinding as replacement, correct? Brian?
Yeah, we haven't accepted grinding for a few years.
Yeah, we would have to replace that then.
Okay. And how is that billed?
We will just assess that to you.
It'll be assessed in October when we finish out the assessment hearing, so you'll get another notice then.
Does that make sense, Fernando? Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. I'll ask you again, is anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve the attached resolution and advertise for bids for the project.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Under petition, request to communication, item three point one is the club wine and off sale liquor license renewals for twenty twenty-one. I do want to point out that we have received liquor liability certificates for both the Eagles and the VFW.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve the liquor license contingent on some middle of required documents from all, I guess, applicants.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point two is an application for on sale wine and beer licenses for Keeling LLC doing business as Heirloom Seasonal Bistro.
I'll make a motion to approve the license. I'll second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I see there was someone from Bistro. Is there anything they want to tell us as to what they have planned with their, with their business?
Was someone from Heirloom Seasonal Bistro available to speak?
Yep, this is Gavin Keeling. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Gavin.
Okay, hi, so, excuse me, my partner Christie Birds and I, we plan on opening Heirloom Seasonal Bistro downtown in the old Chachi's location. So our plan is to serve globally influenced and a fast casual dining. More modern food, but locally influenced.
Thank you, Gavin.
Mayor. Oh, sorry, George. Mayor, may I ask Gavin a question, please?
Absolutely.
Gavin, when is your, your open date? When do you expect to be open?
This is Gavin Keeling again. So we plan on opening, we're doing a soft opening around July tenth and then as long as everything falls, you know, into place accordingly, opening around July nineteenth.
Well, I wish you great success.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point three is an application for on sale intoxicating liquor license for GM Pizza doing business as sliced.
George will approve the liquor license application.
I'll second that.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by George, a second from Aaron. City manager Steve Sarvey has something to say.
There's one correction. That should be the license goes through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Of course.
Not twenty day license. Expect them to be around a very long time.
Is there anyone here from that establishment that would like to just kind of brief us on what they all have planned? And if not, that's all right, too.
I'm not hearing anyone, George.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point four is an application for on sale intoxicating liquor license for Sephora D Cecilia.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve that liquor license.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion?
Same thing.
Date's wrong, so we will make a correction to that. Want to answer questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point five is a massage therapy license.
I make a motion to approve that license, Michelle Alexander.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point six is an appointment to the Fine Arts Commission.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Taft Roberts.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by George. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do, if I could, I've known Taft a long time, I like him, he'll, he'll just do great at this and I think this would be a great addition and he's a great burger as well. Yes, which is important.
Very good. Thanks, Steve. Any other comments?
Mayor, I echo Councilman Young's comments.
Very good. Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point seven is a license agreement for Hurry Back Productions event.
I make a motion to.
A license agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second from Eileen. We do have Mike Sloggy here. Would you like to say anything about the event coming up? Yeah, on the, on the mic, please.
Roll call. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for the invitation to speak. Appreciate the motion and second before I even got up here. That's encouraging. So Hurry Back Productions, for those of you that don't know, is a local nonprofit organization. Since twenty seventeen, we've been hosting live music events exclusively at the Saint Cecilia Theater at Cotter Schools. So the event on July tenth represents not only our first venture into a venue besides a theater, it's also our first outdoor show. We're very grateful for the collaboration primarily with Chad and his office to identify the open date that worked well with the artist we found, so it's been a very, very positive process working through this far with city officials. And things are coming together. We're looking very forward to the, to the event on July tenth. And more importantly, I just wanted to be here to answer any questions if council had any regarding the event, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mike. Any, go ahead, Michelle.
Mike, I just want to thank you for using the band shell. I think it, it hungers for some population to be there listening to music again. It's great when we have our, our band play there, but it's nice to see other music and other acts, acts come back into that band shell and use it as it was intended, so I'm very excited to see that on the slate, so thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome. We, we used every available date there was this summer, so.
Thanks, Michelle.
I have a question.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, Mike, looking forward to that event and looking forward again to opening this fall up at Saint Cecilia. You have had nothing but class acts perform up there, so we'll be there again.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
On behalf of all the class acts.
Eileen, you had a comment?
I, I just thought, can, who, who was playing? What?
Oh, sure.
I think I saw some advertisement, but I want to make sure I'm right.
Can I answer?
Absolutely.
So it's, Mike and I had a great discussion last, last week or two weeks ago. So it is a, correct me if I'm wrong here, it is a tribute band?
Correct.
And it is the only band that has, or that tribute band that has ever been endorsed by Prince himself and.
Okay, that's, I had my hopes high and they have been confirmed, so that's excellent. Thank you.
It's, it's called Chase Innovation. They're from the Twin Cities and I believe the lead singer grew up with Prince. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Tommy Chase is the name of the lead singer. He was sort of a shirt sleeves relation of Prince and grew up and, yeah, earned that endorsement. Ironically, it was the first show that we had to cancel in March of twenty twenty due to COVID. They're also coincidentally going to be the leadoff show to the Fall Series back at Cotter, so it's a eight or ten piece group. They bring their own light show. It's, it's really going to be, we feel a kind of an extravaganza down at the band shell, so we're thrilled to have them coming in and thank you for asking.
Thanks. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point eight is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for Hurry Back Productions.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the license.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I would just say, what would a Prince tribute band be without malt liquor? So I feel like appropriate, it's appropriate.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point nine is a request for one hour parking zone to be added to West Street.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
George will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Iden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Pinsky.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point ten is the Bluff Traverse Trail Development Update.
We do have a short presentation by Park and Rec, Chad Ubel and Alicia Ling.
So Mayor and Council, Alicia and I are here to present tonight on the Bluff Traverse project. So we want to just, there, there is no action tonight required, but we did want to give an update on the project primarily because of some new members in the council and then obviously to update the council community on our progress so far. Just take you a step back. The Bluff Traverse project really became a focal point for our department during the twenty nineteen comprehensive parks plan that we completed. And the focus really became on trail development within the bluffs. And so our goal was to connect Sugarloaf to Saint Mary's through a network of trails. Again, obviously in, in the bluffs and that became based on some community input, certainly a top priority. I think that along with the Riverfront Trail that we're currently working on and received some state money as well was in that one A or two category, but again, the Bluff Traverse was an area we felt the community had responded back in a positive way. And so we went through a process to do a comprehensive Bluff Traverse plan that was a requirement, master plan that was requirement of the legacy funding or requirement of the legacy application. And that process kind of led through what's, what's on the screen today and that we wanted to bring back and just give an update about. So we, we needed to do that master plan of the, of the bluff area between Sugarloaf and Saint Mary's. Within that document, we also conducted a natural resources management plan. And so we hired bar engineering to do that plan. They reviewed, you know, habitat, ecological issues that were happening in the bluffs. They looked at some of the proposed trail routes, where to preserve some prairies, where, what some areas to avoid, some areas that would be great to either redevelop, rehab or decommission some of the trails that were within the Bluff Traverse. So that was completed. During that process, we also did what's called the Phase One Archaeological Survey of the area. That's again required through the legacy funding. And primarily that was also a component, a requirement due to Sugarloaf. So Sugarloaf is on the National Register of Historic Places. And because of any work or really land work in that area, we're required to have SHPO review the archaeological Phase One survey. And I think there were some questions recently with council about that ARC survey and I just wanted to read a note that we received from SHPO again, just to kind of take you through this process and how we've cleared through some of the permitting requirements that were needed. So SHPO had indicated that they had reviewed the submitted information regards to the effects on historic properties, including the report titled Phase One Archaeological Identification Survey of Proposed Changes and Upgrades to the Bluff Traverse Recreation Area, Sugarloaf, Garvin Heights and Bluff Side Parks for the city of Winona, Minnesota. Based on the results of the investigations, we have determined that there are no known or suspected archaeological sites in the area that will be affected by the project and that the project as it's currently proposed will have no adverse effect on Sugarloaf. So we, again, completed that Phase One archaeological study. We did then go through the planning commission process. We've received a land disturbance permit so that we can conduct work within the bluffs based on our own Bluff Land Protection Ordinance. Will be required to, once the project begins to get an erosion control permit. Again, it's an internal permit that we need to have through the city. We will be continuing to work. We have not finalized, but we are making, I think, good progress with Minnesota DNR for a permit to take due to the endangered or threatened species within Bluff Traverse. So if you're not aware of that, that's the Timber Rattler that is known to be within the bluff system, so the DNR is working with us. We're finalizing the permit that's required to build trails in the bluffs due to that habitat. And then we will complete any easement or lease agreement requirements that we have within the property that will be developing. So what does that mean? That Alicia is going to go in a little more detail about the location of this first trail here in a minute, but we do have easements with other property owners within the Bluff Traverse. So we have the radio towers that are located on top of the bluff. You know, they, we allow, we grant them an easement, but again, through that agreement, we have to notify them if we come on their property to do work, et cetera. Of course, Woodlawn Cemetery, we have recreational easement through Woodlawn Cemetery, so again, we have some requirements through that license agreement that we would have to meet before we did any trail work. And so funding for the project. The first step in the Bluff Traverse project is all what we would consider city funding, so this is, this is dollars that have been allocated by council. The council allocated six hundred and six thousand one hundred dollars back in March of twenty nineteen. It really is a, a split, that dollar amount is split basically in equal parts besides the contingency, so we have thirty percent of that money going to design and permitting, thirty percent to really the trail development, and then thirty percent of that is going to the twenty twenty-two legacy match. So this. So this first project, again, Alicia is going to describe here in a minute, is city funding. And the reason we proposed that to council back in March was when we attempted the first legacy application in 2018, the application was rejected and one of the key factors was there was not an adequate match from the city. So in our next round of application, we had said the city is investing and feels these trails are important. And so we're going to increase our internal, what we call our internal match. And so we did that with the recent 2022 Legacy Match, and we were successful in getting that grant. Within that grant application, however, though, we said that the $606,000, certainly we increased our internal match, but we were also going to, outside of the legacy dollars, develop trails. Again, it's another way to say it's not only the cash match, we're also going to show the state that we're serious about developing trails in the bluffs. We're actually going to do a trail. And that's what the project is tonight, is that we will start our first trail segment with city dollars prior to the 2022 Legacy Money that we receive from the state. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia and she's going to give you some more detail on this upcoming project.
So, like Chad said, we're going to be starting this project in the fall. It's probably going to start late September and run into late November. And it's going to be a multi-use trail. It's located in Bluff Side Park at the west end of Windcrest Drive. So it's a place that's not really utilized right now by the city too much. As Chad mentioned, there are two towers out, out there. And a few of the neighborhood people like to go out there and walk their dogs and use that gravel road that's back there. And in turn, they've kind of created their own trail system back there. So our hope and dream is that Imba Trail Solutions will come and build us a beautiful multi-use trail that is used for not only hiking, but biking and running, and it's going to be fabulous. So it's going to be an easy green trail. So nice and smooth and mellow for beginner riders and runners and walkers. And it's going to be bidirectional as well, meaning you can go either direction on the trail. And depending on what the DNR says, the length of it should be around 1.75 miles. We may have to reroute the trail a little bit to, as Chad mentioned, we have a permit to take for rattlesnakes. So we want to, of course, avoid any den sites up there and do our best we can to stay away from that area. So we may have to reroute some sections, so the mileage may change. And then the tread width of it is going to be 36 inches wide, so a three foot wide trail. And with Imba Trail Solutions coming up, they're a subcontractor of Rock Solid, which is, they're from Michigan and they have a state contract in Minnesota. And yeah, that is the trail that's going in. We're really excited about it.
So Mayor and Council, again, no action tonight, primarily because the funding is in place, the project falls under state contracting. But we did want to come back specifically to say that we've gone through the process for permits and the studies and that this location was chosen for our first trail in the Bluff Traverse section. So again, wanted to give that update primarily because we'll be working now with Rock Solid to sign that contract and go through that state contract process. So thought it important to bring that to you tonight. And again, with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yep, three quick questions. What surface will the trail be? Two, have we heard from any of the neighbors, like, like the residential neighbors, any, any concerns, you know, year and a? And then what, what's the winter time use on the trail? Will, will it be swept and snow cleared?
So the trail surface will be dirt. And I have not heard anything from neighbors and no concern so far about it going in. We will alert the people at the west end of Windcrest Drive that they may see some machinery up there over the fall. Yeah.
W- wintertime use?
Wintertime use, yes. That all depends on the Winona area mountain bikers, if they want to rally and start grooving the trails.
George, you had some questions?
Yes, so we're guaranteed then another $606,000 is what I'm hearing. And that's going to come in 2022?
Mayor and Council, it is a little bit less than that for the state funding. That 606 was the amount that the council approved to come out of the facility fund and then for us to pay back if need be. The legacy project, Alicia, correct me if I'm wrong, is right around $700,000, including the city match. So it's about $550,000 of state money and about $150,000 of city money.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, so it's been quite a few years since I was hiking up there and I wanted to know, is the path of the trail that you've chosen, is that a current path that people have created on their own?
It is not, no. It will have to be made. There, the current trail that's up there is just, it's what we call a rogue trail. People just constantly hiking back there have created a trail. So that trail will be decommissioned because it was not purposely built. So we will decommission that current trail that goes straight out to the ridge line. And we will build a trail that's in a loop.
Good. I think I remember the rogue trail. That's kind of thrashing my way through there.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? I'll just speak real quickly. I know Rock Solid really well. I've, I've ridden their trails probably in about five, five different states. They are quite simply considered one of the best builders in the world in terms of natural surface trails. They're extremely experienced. They're very considerate of the surrounding areas. They're a sustainable builder. You do have to go through a state contract to, to be able to build natural surface trail in this, in the state of Minnesota, and that's something that they've had and held for quite a while. So they're very experienced and they do a great job, so.
Mayor, I have one question. Will they do any advanced trail option where like you can go off and go over like a little jumper hill or a teeter totter log or something?
We call that a bee line normally. I'll let, I'll let you answer.
Yeah, so the plan with this, this is a green trail that we're, we're building. So the plan is, it's a beginner style trail. So there will be a few small features, but really low because we still want hikers and runners to be able to use the trail. It will be mountain bike optimized. But we can't put in huge rock structures or anything like that for a trail that's multi-use. In the future, if you have a chance to look at the comp plan and the Imba Trail Plan, that will go into more depth about future trails that will be mountain bike specific.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, move up by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Oh wait, we didn't have a motion yet. Sorry, sorry.
Oh.
No?
Mayor and Council, there's no action tonight. Just, just an update on the project.
Great to receive and file.
Okay.
Thank you.
Continue. Mayor Sherman?
So now 311?
Do that. 3.11 is the Winona Heritage Preservation Commission 2022 Preservation Goals, Objectives, and Budgeting Memo.
Do we have someone here to talk about this? I don't think there's a
I don't know. Luke, are you available?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a annual requirement for the Heritage Preservation Commission to submit its goals, priorities, and budget requests to the city council. The budget request for the upcoming 2022 year will be just $2,000 to complete the nomination of the Lake Park Band Shell. This is done in recognition of the ongoing efforts for planning and regarding the comprehensive plan, which will probably affect future memos in May's of many years to come. If there are any questions, I am available to respond.
Thank you, Luke.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Pam.
So Luke, so the HPC is proposing just one project for this next, for this next year. What is going to happen with the demolition by neglect concern?
The demolition by neglect concern, which was turned into the Financial Incentives Package, which was a CLG grant, Certified Local Government Grant, applied for in this year, utilizes 2021 budgeted funds. So as we look to 2022, we are only proposing utilizing city matching funds of $2,000 to leverage $6,500 from Minnesota Historical Society Legacy Grant Funds. So, and, and as to your question, hopefully that project does get funded. We have not heard from the Certified Local Government Grants Authority yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Just, just a compliment for Luke. I have not seen you lately, but now with your beard, you look like a young Paul McCartney, and that's a compliment.
All right, any other comments or discussion? I don't know where to go with that, George. Jeez Louise.
Well, he does.
Luke, you look great. That's all I got to say. We don't have a motion?
Nope.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is a request for a four-way stop at intersections of Seventh and High Forest and Eighth and High Forest.
Mayor George here. I want you to install the stop signs and introduce the ordinance.
I'm Pam would second that.
We have a motion by George and a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
No.
Muller?
No.
Alexander?
No.
Ayden?
Aye.
Borzakowski? Rapinski?
Aye.
Was Georgia a?
No. He's a I.
Okay, motion passes, correct?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the agreement with the Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center for the alternative response group.
I make a motion to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Steve Young will second.
We have a motion by Eileen and a second from Steve. We do have Eric Severs from Hiawatha Valley here. We also have Police Chief Tom Williams and Assistant Chief Jay Rasmussen, if there are any questions.
I do have a few brief comments, Your Honor, if I may. Thank you. This project has been coming along for quite a while. Back in 2016, I first read a story in the League of Minnesota City's newsletter about a response team that was operating in Duluth. At the time, Chief Bostrack and I started investigating a service such as that. And we looked at that for several years. We even spoke with several departments who are operating programs like the one that's being proposed this evening. However, we decided to implement the COO program first, which is modeled on one that's operated in La Crosse. And we've, they've had great success there and we've seen that we've had great success with that program here as well. The proposal before you this evening is the next step, I feel, in the evolution of providing services to the community as well as growing the resource and capabilities of the Winona Police Department. Starting last summer, we focused our attention on providing proactive services to folks in need. A working group was established, made up of community health, mental health professionals, the police, and other members of the public, facilitated by Brian Verdig. We had Councilmember Muller and Councilmember Borzakowski sat in on those meetings as well. We spent several months looking for ways to best serve this community. And I want to give my sincere thanks to everyone who served on that team. And I also want to thank the council for putting funds in the 2021 budget as the work to refine the response team carried forward. The project that is presented tonight, a partnership with Hiawatha Valley, is the outcome of these efforts. Before I turn it over to Eric Severs, the Executive Director of Hiawatha Valley Mental Health and his, and his team, I want to quickly point out a few of the most important aspects, I feel, of the response team. Firstly, to provide first responder services along with co-responder when needed to meet people where they are in crisis or hopefully help them avoid crisis. Secondly, to proactively help people with needs. We feel access to community resources and making sure that folks who use these resources remain plugged into them will keep people healthier and out of the system. And third, a reduction in calls for service by the police department so they can focus their efforts on other areas of the community, get them back in the neighborhoods and not just rushing from call to call. The contract before you is intentionally not specific on the duties performed. Our research has shown that in every community that has adopted a model like this, two things have happened over time. The first is the program is still operational and being offered. Nearly every community that started an alternative response option, it's still going. Secondly, the programs have to be adaptable to the needs of the community. We don't want to start with a rigid structure of services. We need to, we need to trust in this process and let it develop over time with the experiences that we, that we seek in the field. And with that, Your Honor, I'd like to ask Eric to say a few words with his team and then followed by Jay and Tom.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mayor and Council Members. Kristy Farrington is with us, I believe, virtually, and she's the director of our she's the director of our adult community base program and if approved by the city, would oversee the two ART members. You know, we're, we're very excited to be a part of a new model of care for citizens that is really truly transformational. There's very few communities in our state that provide a resource and service for citizens like this could and will for the city. We're very grateful. Kristy and I have talked a little bit about Councilmember Borzakowski and Muller for being part of that 12-member group who, who came up with a vision of this program. I reviewed this vision, I have several times with our board of directors at Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center, as recently as earlier this evening. And they approved the positions at my board level, pending your approval tonight of the contract. So I'm very excited about that. Our agency has for many years provided mobile mental health crisis and we just see this as an expansion of that program and something that could provide the city a better response than we have historically. We're an agency that has done things differently a bit and evolved over time as the needs of people have changed. And I think this is just a continuation of that approach that our agency has had over the years. As, as Steve mentioned, you know, I've been clear with our board and it's been clear in the means we've had up till tonight about the purpose of this program and the, the flexibility of it and the need to have data to really help inform us. And we look forward to showing the results and, and adjusting the program as it, as it goes over time. So any, I'm open to any questions, any of the council members or the mayor may have.
Any comments or questions for Eric? I'd like to thank you, Eric, for working with everybody. I know there's been a lot of back and forth throughout this process and thanks for sticking with it. I do appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Police Chief Tom Williams and Assistant Chief Jay Rasmussen speaking.
And so just to kind of reiterate what City Manager Sarvi had stated is that this was brought up several years ago and at the time, we decided to go with the community outreach officers. And we really, really are reaping the benefits of that position. Currently, Brad Barrientos, Sergeant Barrientos, and Investigator Saboda started the program and they hit the ground running and really kind of set the pace for which, which direction that program should go. Both of them were promoted, which gives you an idea of how well they were doing in there. And they're now filled by Officer Lanning and Officer Hayden who have filled in phenomenally. We did start with the art program. Jay sat on the program as well. From a law enforcement position, this is going to be a very good program for the city of Winona. We have calls for service with the same individual time and time and time again. And based on staffing and our abilities, although we do a phenomenal job as a department dealing with mental health issues and substance abuse issues, we just don't have the time and we don't have the ability to do case follow-up. During the last year, and Eric, you could probably reiterate this as well, our relationship with Hiawatha Valley has increased and become very, very strong. We have used the crisis response unit numerous times for individuals that are in a state of crisis, be it mental health or chemical dependency. And those people come out from Hiawatha Valley, and they assist individuals in need that frees law enforcement up. I know that there's some concern that law enforcement is still involved in this. And we we have to be on the onset to become involved because where does everybody call when they need assistance? They call the Law Enforcement Center. It goes into Winona County Dispatch. Winona County Dispatch then sends an officer. And everybody that's at the table, everybody here wants the safety of everybody to be priority number one. The person that is being called on, the people that are responding, being Hiawatha Valley, as well as the police officers. We think that this will probably evolve to the point where we will have a crisis response that will be generated. The call will come into a central point, being dispatch, and then hopefully will be transferred to the alternative response team for them to make the assessment as to whether or not they need law enforcement to assist them just on a safety aspect, or if it's something that they've developed a relationship with individuals that that they're able to go. However, they will have communication, direct communication to the Law Enforcement Center, again, to make sure that everybody is safe, the responders are safe, the people that are are in need of service are safe. So we're looking forward to working with Hiawatha Valley and hoping for a very good outcome in the next year or two years.
Thank you, Tom.
I would just add that it was a pleasure to work with you, Eric, and Kristi Farrington, who's on Zoom, just phenomenal people. And what's safer for the community and better for the community is what we're all about. So we think this is that.
Thanks, Jay. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would, if I if I could. So I do support what we're what we're doing tonight. I feel this this begins to put to right the the tragic error that was made in our country 50 and 60 years ago, when we we emptied our our institutions and didn't provide a an alternative for people that needed care. Many of them were were dumped on streets in our our largest cities, maybe not so much in Winona. I'm going to bring this local and and say that we have an elderly man who lives in in one of our apartment units. He's got multiple issues, mental and physical. We have called the police to help us with wellness checks. And we've struggled to find how do we connect this man to local services? And I'm I'm hoping that this can be part of the solution. I'm a fiscal conservative, that's no secret. And so I want to I want a return on the dollar. So I I want staff to to understand that I want I want updates on this. I want to know how this is working. If, you know, as we renew this, I understand this is a three-year contract. Is that right? Okay, so I'll be here in three years. And and I'll I'll want to say I was recently elected, so I want to see that that this is working. So I I will want updates, but I I do want to try this. I know this is new, and I'm I'm willing to spend the money and and really hoping and believing that this will work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Eileen, go ahead.
Just wanted to comment as someone who was part of that process, along with George and Jay and many community community members, that this was a really wonderful process. It was really eye-opening for me to have all the different perspectives of community members in law enforcement and social services. And I think that we we came to a really great result. And I'm really happy that it's hopefully coming to fruition tonight and that those folks will be able to get to work and get going. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I know that this program, in fact, I should say, I think the the outlook of this program is going to be successful as our community outreach officers have been. I have been in contact with with all four of the community outreach officers and worked with them a little bit. And other agencies I work with, they work with them quite a bit. And I believe this this is going to fit into it as well, too. But like I say, I think, you know, the success of the of the COO is definitely going to, I think, have an influence on what we're trying to do here. And as I look on my screen, I see Kristi Farrington. She is just itching to say something, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks, George. Kristi, would you like to say something?
I I just wanted to say I'm very excited about it. I think it's going to be a really, a really good program, and we're excited to see it evolve. And I guarantee there will be lots of data that will be collected so that we can bring it back to you all.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? I'd like to just state real quick. It's funny, because a lot of these agenda items that come in front of us, they're kind of black and white. You know, it's it's real simple. It's like, yes, no, yep, uh huh, I agree with this, I don't. Every time I see the ART year that we talk about this, I feel good. I feel, I don't just think. I feel good about this project. I talk to the police officers. They feel good about it. Our community in general feels good about it. I hear other council members feeling good about this. And that, to me, says more on a personal level in terms of how this is going to go because I feel good about it. And and it's weird, because I don't normally try to put feelings into these decisions, but I truly am hearing great things from everybody about this. And and one thing I'd like to communicate to the community, this will evolve. This will change. Every single person who's been involved in this process has reiterated that to me, and I would like to reiterate that to the community. It'll look completely different, or it should look completely different in a year from now, even a few months from now, potentially. So it's important that we understand that the role of these ART technicians, social workers, however, whatever their term might be, it will change. And we're going to work with them, and they're going to work with us. But overall, what this is going to do is it's going to benefit the community. And so to everyone involved, thank you so much for this. We really appreciate it as a community. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Hi.
Councilmember Young?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Alexander?
Hi.
Iden?
Hi.
Borzakowski?
Hi.
Pinsky?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is the Water Edge Apartments LLC collateralization of tax abatement.
I'll miss Alexander, make a motion to accept the attachments of the tax abatement agreement and the letter of consent and agree to the terms requested.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor George here is Lucy on?
I believe Nick is.
Nick is, okay. Yeah, Nick, George here. Why did we choose tax abatement over over TIF?
Mayor and council, the reason that we chose abatement over TIF is based off the financial gap that the development had. Abatement was just the easier tool to use at that time to fill that need rather than TIF, which would collect a larger amount in a shorter amount of time.
And how many years is this going to be for?
Mayor and council, how the abatement agreement is written, it would last up to 15 years, but not to exceed the amount of $135,674 on what is roughly, I believe, going to be right around a 10.4 or 10.7 million-dollar project.
I know, I believe everyone on council probably received an email today from one of the neighbors down there about this project. And, you know, all all I know on this is that, you know, this property, the former Chikonowski property, you know, has been for sale for what, eight years? Anyone know exactly, eight, 10 years? I mean, it's been there. I don't know if there was a lot of interest in it. I thought maybe that the senior living center there, I thought maybe they would look to expand into it. And then again, I thought maybe the apartment owner in the back maybe would have chose maybe to, you know, put on another addition for his for his building back there. But like I said, I, you know, it it's going to fit our workforce housing need, as we're hearing. We're hearing from employers. We're hearing from people that, you know, they're they're looking for places to live. And, you know, hopefully that this development turns out successful. I know now there will be another plan coming, correct, Nick? That where they'll have everything all drawn out again for approval?
Mayor and council, that would be coming from the planning and zoning, I believe, is what you may.
Right, okay, because I know one of the biggest questions on that was, is that, you know, the entrance and the exits. I know when I when we first talked about this, I looked for, hopefully, one entrance and, you know, two exits, or, you know, whatever it may be. But we'll look at that as they draw the plans up. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Brian, I have a quick question, Brian DeFrain. I'm assuming MINDOT has looked at potential development of this property while working on the MINDOT.
They're they're highly aware, but they are gaining an easement from these guys on the
Okay.
northeast corner.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Hi.
Councilmember Young?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Alexander?
Hi.
Iden?
Hi.
Borzakowski?
Hi.
Pinsky?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is a plat review for the Water Edge Edition.
I miss Alexander, make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Hi.
Councilmember Young?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Alexander?
Hi.
Iden?
Hi.
Borzakowski?
Hi.
Pinsky?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is a temporary work area easement for the East End Boat Harbor.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion?
Yeah, George here, Mayor.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, it mentions in here that the development, Winona cleanup of the ramp, you know, when they're when they're done with completion, and, you know, the ramp's kind of in good condition, that boat launch ramp at the East End Boat Harbor, and I know Aaron has is familiar with that. It's a terrible mess. It's been beat up by the trucks here by, as they were hauling sand here two years ago. It's it still has not been properly maintained or taken care of. And my question is, when they're hauling the sand and, you know, from the dredge, are they going to be just be doing a day shift operation? I don't see it that it's yet spelled out to be an emergency where they go around the clock, but is it just going to be a day shift haul? And how often? I know last time the street sweeper was on that road constantly. Does all that, will all that be taking place again?
As of right now, George, it's intended to be a day shift only. As you well know, the river isn't high, so we're not looking at emergency type of, you know, where barges get hung up and they have to do emergency dredging. So we're looking predominantly Monday through Friday, probably even half a day on Friday, and no weekend work.
And what about repair of that ramp down there? You and I have talked about that before.
We can patch potholes, but there's not any funding in to repay it by any means.
And we hit the core on that.
I would have a really tough time doing that.
Okay, but I have confidence in you that you can get that done.
Your confidence might be too high.
Mayor, Aaron here.
Go ahead.
I would like to piggyback on George's comments a little bit. It's been my experience with the unloading of the dredge sound there that the the landing itself was in fairly decent condition. Yet what's happening that I'm watching on a weekly basis is the sand that they pile up to make the landing for the excavator has a tendency to fill in over the concrete strapping, and it makes it slippery. I've actually pulled vehicles that can't pull their boat out there, you know, and ideally, they would probably do that one time and then figure it out and go to a different boat landing, but they don't. So there is a difficulty with the sand piling up on the concrete there, and it makes it slippery for them. Not sure what we do to to clean that up or whatever. Also, it's been brought to my attention that the Boat Harbor itself is filling in a little bit more when they're doing the sand there. And a few people down there have asked me to bring it to council's attention that, boy, if they could help dredge out at least the opening of that Boat Harbor or something, because they feel that the sand is filling in that Boat Harbor a little bit from all the sand that's being moved with excavators and stuff there. So when they do dredge and they do that, I know it's it's a narrow opening, but maybe they could look at the possibility of scooping some of that out to assist that. I know it was on the on the dredge plan 50 years ago even, I think. And and that reading through the agreement here, George, I think it's my understanding that they're going to use barricades again like they did before during the week, and then they would move the barricades and make the landing open on the weekends.
Yeah, the city provides the barricades.
Okay.
They can get set up on.
That was another question I was asked, and I just want to make sure I was reading that correctly before I answer that. Okay, thank you.
Aaron, yesterday I had 7.3 feet of depth coming through that that section you were talking about dredging, so.
You're making reference to Dick's opening.
Yeah.
I'm making reference.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, and and.
Is it deeper or shallower right now through there?
It's shallow. There used to be a time when you couldn't touch there. And over the last five to 10 years, especially after the dredge sand has been unloaded there, it's walkable now. I mean, it's not even over your head anymore.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I totally concur with Aaron's comments on the East End Boat Harbor and dredging the entryway. And again, to Brian DeFrain, I have confidence in you.
Thank you, George.
We'll take on the railroad next, Brian.
Here's a fool's errand.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Hi.
Councilmember Young?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Alexander?
Hi.
Iden?
Hi.
Borzakowski?
Hi.
Pinsky?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Next is council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Since I'm full of compliments tonight to everyone, I just have one rant that I will go on here in a minute. But first of all, congratulations to Winona Senior High Girls Softball Team and the Cotter Girls Softball Team. Winona High has advanced. Cotter is working on that, and we wish them well as they go. So to the fill-in recording secretary tonight, you were very, very good reciting those Polish names.
She helped me tonight, George.
And also to the city manager, if you could submit a recent photo of yourself in the paper instead of your high school picture, you know, you do a nice. We see your picture, and I said, oh, that's his high school picture.
That was taken the day that you hired me. That's why the deer in the headlights look.
You were really surprised, huh? You know, and now I guess kind of for my rant, you know, it it seems, I guess, that, you know, being a homeowner, I guess I would be very much embarrassed if the city has to issue me a notice to cut my lawn, give me a notice to pick up trash in my yard, remove my junk cars, you know. For Pete's sake, people, it's not that hard to cut your grass. It's not that hard to clean up your yard. Let's clean our properties up. Let's cut our grass so the city doesn't have to come and tell you. And let's beautify our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander?
I have one complaint, and it's about the heat. But this may help you, George, because they pull the grass. And so then the mowing problem may disappear for a short while, but.
Agree. Agree.
Thanks, Michelle. Councilmember item.
Yes, uh, yes, I, I have received quite a few questions over the last month or two about what is happening down at Lake Winona. And so what, next Monday at 5 o'clock, we'd like to invite, Healthy Lake Winona would like to invite anyone that's curious about the. The restoration projects down there to come and join us. We'll be, we'll be walking along the lake and describing the different projects that we've, that we've taken on, which is tree plantings and shrub plantings and all kinds of. Restoration of, of the shoreline. And there's some very interesting things going on and we'll have some people to talk about that. So next Monday, 5 o'clock, meet at the Banshell Parking Lot. That's all.
Very good. Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Muller.
It's June. Happy Pride Month from the queer councilperson. I hope everyone celebrates safely. Don't get in too big of a crowd.
Thanks, Eileen. Councilmember Young?
I'm good. Thank you very much. That's good.
Councilmember Pinsky.
I thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate, thanks, give kudos to the. City employees for repairing the potholes in the area. I've had a number of comments and people said, thanks. They've seen them out filling in potholes and, and doing road repair and so on. Also for cleaning up some of the graffiti in the area. That's been taken care of, so thank you for that. And I've been asked numerous times about the railroad tracks going down to the levee by Bay State Millie. And I, they're, I guess they're pretty bad in a lot of people's opinions. I've had the question asked a number of times, is that something that the. If we get new. Monies for its tracks and stuff, are those some of the tracks that would be addressed or, or fixed, or is it the city responsibility? Is it Bay State responsibility? So I'd love if I'd have some sort of answer to come back when I get that question about those, that track and, and who repairs it, who oversees it and so on. So if, if I could get a, an answer to that tonight, that I can report back when I get that question, or I'd really appreciate that.
Mayor and Council, a couple of things here, and one, the tracks are in. Terrible condition. We've had at least two, which is two too many. Individuals in wheelchairs get stuck crossing Walnut Street. Where a call to 911 has been issued and fire has gone out to help them. We have contacted U P numerous times to discuss that crossing. It was discussed during Levy Park Gateway Project. We had individuals from Omaha here looking at that crossing. They said that they would address it. We have not heard anything since. Ironically, today, in case you hear from constituents. They were doing work on, U P was doing work on Walnut Street in the rail crossing. They were replacing a track that broke. They were not doing the crossing. Brian and I met them down there today. We were hoping that they were starting work on the crossing. They were not. They were just simply repairing a, a broken rail. We were given in individual to contact today while we were down there. And so we'll reach out to that individual again to let them know our displeasure with the crossing. It is our responsibility though. It would be. Need to have city funding to do that crossing.
Okay, so I would be safe in saying then it's, it's, the city sees it, it's on their, their view, they're looking at it, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think the correct answer is always, we have some pre- and confidence in Brian DeFrain, so. All right, thanks, everybody.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. It's the approval of the May 17 minutes. An ordinance to amend the city's rental housing code and a claim against the city by Steve Volkman.
George moves to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by George, a second by Eileen. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Pinsky?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion that we adjourn and the new motion says the time being 7:45 and there be no further business to come before this council, I make a motion adjourned. Is that what you want to say instead of? It says that's the recommended motion, so I'm giving it a shot.
Awesome. We've got a motion from Michelle and a second from George. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Pinsky?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.